Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 14th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well now we'll move on to the roll call members. Madam Corrigan, call the roll, please.
Councilman Kincaid.
President.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Here.
Councilwoman Copeland, absent this evening. Councilman Wheat.
Present.
Councilwoman Messenger, and she is from.
There she is.
Hi, Ben.
Thank you. And Councilman Jones.
Present.
Thank you.
Very good. With that, move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Actually, I believe we have two, correct?
Yes.
We have two meeting, or two meeting minutes to approve. One from November 9th and one from November 23rd. So are there any changes to the November 9th meeting minutes?
I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes from November 9th.
Okay, we've motioned to approve as our second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed?
Aye.
Assuming that's four, yep, okay. Now we'll move on to the approval of the 23rd, November 23rd. Any changes to those minutes?
I make a motion we approve the minutes for November 23rd.
Okay, we've motioned to approve as our second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please proceed. There it is. Disposed? Okay, those are approved. All right, now on to old business. Nothing on my agenda. Is there anything from council?
Nothing from me.
Anything from Councilwoman Messenger?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, then on to new business then. First item up is Resolution 2020-15. This is a waiver request for tax abatement concerning DS Smith. And we have Molly Whitehead from the Boone County Economic Development Corporation to explain this. So I'll hand it over to Molly to explain the situation here.
All right, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
All good.
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so back in September 2018, you all approved a real and personal property tax abatement for DS Smith. As a reminder, they are corrugated, we must ensure they're located on the southwest side of the Lebanon Business Park. And they made an investment, a little over $100 million in the city of Lebanon, or at least it was estimated to debt at the time. You all granted a seven-year real and personal property tax abatement. It's slightly different schedules depending on real or personal. DS Smith reps contacted us earlier this year, the summer, the fall, and had been notified by the county that they did not file the proper paperwork that was due to review their real property tax abatement. And there's not a whole lot of recourse for companies, if this is the instance, but what other Boone County communities have done and waited before it did tonight is a request to essentially shift the personal property abatement. So instead of this year being year one, it would now be year zero. And then everything would be pushed back and held since it's the schedule that we had presented back in 2018. So in years one through seven, it would be 100% of eight, 80, 60, 60, 40%, 20%, and then 10% in year seven. So then the only difference would be that they just have to pay the property tax bill now, and year seven just looks a little bit different than it normally would have. Because those require your approvals if you so chose to grant that going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I mean, I missed a few things there because it was kind of garbled a little bit.
Yes, so essentially, they were, essentially, they missed a filing deadline, and they weren't, essentially, it's more of a clerical mistake on their part.
Yeah.
So essentially, what happens is we're essentially, they paid their tax, they will pay their taxes for this year, but it's, essentially, their abatement will kick in. We're shifting what the year designations are. So essentially, they still get the same tax abatement, but it, their, there will just be their first year they actually end up paying their taxes on it because they didn't fulfill, or finish all the paperwork needed for the abatement approval. If that makes sense. So they were, or still want to do the same economic deal that got them here to Lebanon. It's just changing essentially when that start year is. So we're essentially pushing what we already agreed to just back a year.
Okay.
This is kind of a clerical mistake that I'm sure they won't ever make again, I'm sure. Probably learned a lesson for them, so. Any other questions?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Sierra, anything from you?
No.
Okay, Rob, we do have a public hearing on this as well, too. So I'm going to have Rob read the resolution first, and then we'll have the public hearing on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Resolution 2020-15, again approving a waiver request with respect to the application for deduction from the assessed valuation from DS Smith Packaging Ocean LLC. Again, as Ms. Whitehead indicated in 2018-41, this council approved a real property deduction for DS Smith Packaging Ocean within the area. It's since constructed approximately 560,000 square foot warehouse building on the property. And this council has been advised that DS Smith did not timely file an application for deduction. Because the deduction application was not timely filed, DS Smith will not receive an abatement for the real property taxes for the first year of the project's property. And such taxes will be fully paid, be paid by DS Smith. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council is a designated body by resolution may waive noncompliance with various requirements of the act, including a person's failure to timely file an application for deduction from assessed value. DS Smith has requested that this council exercise its authority to waive the noncompliance event by this resolution. Again, this council has, or will hold, a public hearing on the terms set forth in this resolution. Again, this be it resolved, that this resolution will be granting a waiver pursuant to Indiana law with respect to the noncompliance event in a project. And all those abatement years, again, are set forth in Section 1 of that, as Ms. Whitehead discussed. All other terms of Resolution 2018-41 shall remain in full force and effect. And the Boone County auditor and assessor shall be supplied with a copy of this resolution upon passage.
Any questions from council now the resolution has been read?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time then, I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2020-15. If you have any comments that you want to share, feel free to step forward, and please state your name for the record. Okay, no sudden movements. I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2020-15. Any final comments for council? At this time then, we entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2020-15.
Well, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2020-15.
We have a motion to approve as our second.
Second.
Motion and a second for discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you, council. I'll just pause for.
Thank you.
Give Sierra a chance to answer. All right, next up is Resolution 2020-11, which is the fiscal plan for the MNI Riley Annexation. We have Ben Bontrager to actually introduce the next two items here.
Good evening, council members. I'll walk through this pretty quickly. I was not here for the last meeting when the annexation ordinance was introduced, but this is the fiscal plan associated with that. Annexation for MNI Riley, which is just south of Ken's Foods. In terms of the fiscal plan, this one's pretty straightforward. It's an agricultural piece of property. There's very few improvements there. There is a single house. But essentially, when you're, when you annex a piece of property like this, a single piece of property, there's very, very small incremental costs associated with annexing a property like this. There's a small segment of road that'll become part of the city. But the, but the impacts in terms of the costs to the city are very minimal. At the same time, our tax revenue is not going to increase very significantly either because it's a piece of agricultural property. So if you look, I always point to the appendix, which is on page, I just, I just went past it. Appendix 1, page 12. This kind of breaks down the fiscal impact to the city a little bit for you. You'll see that the assessed value, in the column 1, it shows you the assessed value of the annexation area in 2022, pay 2023, you'll see that we add about $318,500 assessed value to the city by annexing this property, which I believe results in a net tax impact of about $2,500 bucks. So we're not talking about much in the way of revenue or much in the way of cost to the city. So that's, that's the quick breakdown of the fiscal plan. It does outline all the specific services that are provided, et cetera, but indicates that there's a small incremental impact in terms of those costs. So that's a, that's a quick rundown of the fiscal plan for you. We have to answer any questions.
And just to clarify to you, the fiscal plan does not contemplate an expansion of Ken's Foods on this property?
It does not.
So theoretically, it could be significantly more if they chose to.
If, if at some point in the future, they decide, yeah, that'll have a certainly different impact. This, this only, this only calculates the impact assuming that we're just annexing a piece of agricultural property.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
I assume this is voluntary, right?
That they would construct something?
No, voluntarily annexed.
Oh, volun, sorry, yes, it's a voluntary annexation, correct.
Yep, so again, property owner coming to us asking to be brought in the city.
Yes, yeah, the request came from the current property of MNI Riley.
Yep. Any other questions for Ben from the council?
No, sir.
Rob, can you read the ordinance, Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 2020-11 for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a resolution establishing a fiscal plan for the annexation of a certain property to the city of Lebanon that's set forth in Exhibit A and depicted on Exhibit B. Again, pursuant to Indiana law, this council is required to adopt a written fiscal plan prior to the passage of an annexation ordinance 2020-15. The fiscal plan is set forth in Exhibit C that Mr. Bontrager just went through. This fiscal plan has been reviewed and complies with the requirements of the Indiana Code, and this council hereby approves the fiscal plan and the areas sought to be annexed.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning Resolution 2020-11? Scut you good?
Oh.
Thumbs up, all right. With that, we entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2020-11.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-11.
We have a motion to approve as our second. Motion second from Dick. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, next up is Ordinance 2020-15. This is ordinance on second reading. This is the actual annexation ordinance for the property, so go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, just a, just a quick summary there. As like, I wasn't at the last meeting, I know Kevin walked through this a little bit with you. Ken's Foods is, has a purchase agreement on this piece of property. Currently, they have no plans for the property. They have no imminent plans. As when I talked to the plant manager last, he said this was really an opportunity for them to buy the properties adjacent to them so they can control what happens to it in the future, whether they need it or not. So they can either control their ability to expand on it or make sure that they don't, they don't have any built-in remonstrators or something else goes next to them. So again, no imminent plans, no scheduled plans for the immediate future. This was merely just an opportunity for them to have control of the property that was adjacent to their existing building. Other than that, I don't have anything further.
Any questions for Ben from the council concerning Ordinance 2020-15?
No, sir.
Okay, Rob, can you read that on second reading for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Ordinance 2020-15 concerns the annexation of certain property that's identified in Exhibits A and B. Again, 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for the annexation. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission had a public hearing at its meeting on November 16th and forwarded Docket 20-36 to the council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the planned business industrial zoning classification for the annexation area. This council conducted a public hearing on November 23rd, 2020. It's adopted, a fiscal plan is, was just approved. This annexation area meets the contiguity requirements, and therefore, again, the annexation area generates south of the existing Lebanon Business Park adjacent to Ken's Foods, directly west of middle Jamestown Road and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the northern boundary of the annexation area. It's hereby declared annexed and to be a part of the city of Lebanon. It's to include the contiguous public highways and rightsways, and it's assigned council district 2 and shall become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. And again, it's assigned the planned business industrial zoning classification.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion after the reading of the ordinance?
No, sir.
Okay. Would entertain a motion then concerning, or excuse me, any public comment concerning or ordinance 2020-15? Okay, this time then, would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2020-15.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance 2020-15.
We have a motion, we have motion to approve in a second from Councilman Campbell. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that ordinance is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes the ordinance's resolutions. Next up is discussion concerning audiovisual equipment for city council chambers. And Councilman Wheat, this is yours.
Is Joe, are you going to present anything, Joe, or? Okay. I met with Joe and I forget the gentleman's name, the.
Matt?
Yeah. That, well, the fellow that provided the quotes for potential work. Basically, my understanding of it is that it would give us more capabilities than what we have now. My only concern would be, do we need those capabilities? We can do mixed meetings like this now under governor's executive order, but when that goes away, which we all hope is very soon, then we'll be back to where we all have to physically be present at the meeting. So on that end of it, I don't know that we absolutely need this stuff. I would say it's something we'll probably want to do as we move into the future, but I don't know that we need to do it right this second. There was some other gear in there. I don't think we need that. I think really the only discussion is whether we need to upgrade our AV, actually just audio capabilities of the council chambers. So my recommendation at this point would we, we just hold off on it until we know what the future is going to bring because we're not, we're not missing any capability right now that we need. And spending this money would, again, put us kind of on the forward edge of technology, but do we need to be in that position yet? So having said that, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's just a matter of, do we need it? And my own personal feeling is at this point, not yet.
Just to comment slightly on this, I have heard that some of the Cities and Towns Group and some of the other governmental bodies, like the Indiana Counties, I think they're going to be pushing for legislation that would allow us to do these types of mixed meetings or, or without executive order.
Right.
I don't know if that will be adopted or not by the legislature in their infinite wisdom, so they'll make that decision. But I know it is being talked about trying to make it more of a permanent status versus this kind of where we're operating with that. So again, just, I just throw that in the discussion as well, too.
Yeah, it's a, as we've all learned in our various businesses, that being physically present is not going to be as critical in the future. And I myself, you know, I travel quite a bit, and I have to miss meetings. It'd be awfully handy for me to be able to dial in from someplace and participate. So at the point we can utilize that capability, we absolutely probably should, but again, for right now, I don't think it's a, it would be a want rather than a need at the moment.
Any other discussion from council?
I would agree with Brent because technology changes so quickly that if they did change the law where we could do it forever, it might be where the technology changes before we get there.
Dick, do you want to say something?
No, I got, no, I just got two other topics.
Okay.
I want to talk about.
Anything from our virtual member, Councilwoman Messenger?
Um, I, I don't know, you know, and I think that the technology, I think our system could be upgraded. I think that the viewers from home could appreciate more viewing capability and higher upgraded sound system and when we call in, if we need to call in, I think that these issues could be resolved if we upgraded our system. I think that we're probably behind the times comparative to other cities with the systems that we have. I don't know, I just feel just a little bit different, which is completely fine. I just, I think that our system appears to be a little old.
Okay. I don't know if we lost her or not. All right, so at this time then, I don't think there's any action required at this time. Again, we'll keep an eye on it and keep discussing it. If something changes, we can make that decision, so.
Joe want to say something?
Yep.
No, some of the things, and Brent, the gentleman's name you're looking for is Joe, Joe, Joe.
Okay.
Matt and you, so.
Yeah.
It's easy for me to remember because it's.
Yeah.
Same name I have. And just to lay everything on the table, the decision that the city council makes in joint, in collaboration with Lebanon Utilities, completely yours and will be respected 100%. Just to pass along that the computer that is being used to do a lot of the dubbing, a lot of the things, the, what's being done tonight, you can see Sierra holding up the phone to her ear, trying to hear, I'm not sure how well she can hear with my mask, sorry, Sierra. It is a pretty antiquated computer, and it's one that's on loan from our IT department. And you'll see in the request that was, was passed along, that part of that hardware was, was a computer. It may be something to revisit at a later date, but we wanted to pass along that we're more than happy to keep working on what we've affectionately called as the chicken wire and duct tape approach. It worked relatively well tonight, but if we're going to go to more of the virtual meetings, and the hybrid meetings as they're being called, Brent made a great point when it was Joe, Joe, Matt and I, along with Brent, was how great, being able to have that tool and being able to move and work in front of what's coming as opposed to working after. And so being able to pay for those things and have all that equipment upgraded will take time, and that, that will kind of leave us in flux with, with how meetings are done then. And then being able to operate, depending on what happens in the COVID cases upcoming in the year 2021. But like I said, either way, play to win, and we'll be able to have things that are working for our public and for you as well, of course.
Let me ask you a question, Joe. So what I hear you say is, right now, you would like to have a computer upgrade?
Well, well, some of that is, Brent said, well, I mean, these are wishful, are they, are they necessary? Probably not. They're, they're more so on the periphery, and folks from utilities can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but they're, they're more pertaining to Freedom of Information Acts, if someone were to ask for a copy of this meeting, how to dub that down and being able to do that. It's a workaround, it's more time for Matt and myself, but they're, it can be done. But at some point, it will need to be addressed if we're, we're going to see an increase or continuation of cases in the year 2021 and beyond, or if we decide to, like Brent said, if, you know, we are traveling and have to join remotely and having those hybrid meetings, being able to have those capabilities and do that. It is something to look at, so maybe, maybe not a no, but a, but a slow on this type of proposal.
Yeah, I think it's going to, a lot of this is going to depend on what the legislature wants to do, and we'll know fairly early, honestly, if there's, if this bill moves, right? I mean, if it starts going through the process, then we'll know that they, okay, they're probably okay with it. So it'll just be, we'll keep an eye and see what happens.
Joe, I got a question. We pay for IT, utility pays for IT. Is IT helping you guys at all on this situation? And to try, to me, those guys ought to be the guys who are trying to work out how to make this system work the best that it can work.
Sure.
So it's not all on you and Matt.
Oh, sure. But we've looped in Sondi Solutions, the IT company, in with this, and costs associated with this, so the proposals that were passed along would be an 80/20, is that how that is? 80/20 split between city and utility. And so whether it's the $55,648.69 or one of the lower upgrades that are the $13,000.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the many part of it. I'm talking about the IT department. Seems like to me the IT department ought to be working to help make the system work and, and work to its best capability for both of us.
And we've reached that potential. They have been looped in, when we started going to remote, before Zoom had better security, they're the ones that recommended and helped us facilitate WebEx, and so that's the reason why, that system was Sondi Solutions. So they have stepped in and helped us run to the best that we can, which is where we're at now. And so Zoom, Zoom is better, so hopefully the ease that Sierra and Molly were able to jump on and do that, great. There is a workaround that has been done in the back, too, as to those guys. So there is one speakerphone sitting next to the mayor, so we can pick up those that are joining remotely. But this is the best that we're going to be able to do, and that's, we'll certainly do that for as long as it's needed.
And the only reason I say that is every meeting I go to, in every different county I go to, they got an IT directors right there coordinating all this activity.
Yeah.
To make sure they're meeting functions and functions online and so forth.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that somewhere down the line that I think that they ought to be helping you guys make sure you got what you need and make sure it works, so.
Yeah, and our workarounds, I mean, they, they had folks that were working and answering the calls while in person and on the phone, too.
Okay. Any other comments on this issue?
No, sir. Thank you.
Dick say you had something?
Yeah, I got a couple of, couple of things. One, I'd like to make a request from the city council night to approve, I made the request to the Board of Works this evening, to approve streetlights on County Road 250 North.
So that doesn't have to come to council, it's just Board of Works?
Doesn't have to come through the council.
Nope.
I just thought maybe it did because there was funding of.
Oh, it's Board of Works.
Okay. The other one is, we'd like to go ahead and make the appointment for council president for next year. I'd like to make a motion to approve Brent Wheat as president of the council for next year, effective January 1 through December 31st of 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to elect Councilman Brent Wheat as council president for the 2021 year. Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Do me a favor.
Sorry, that was, that was not a day.
Yeah, we figured that, so I forgot to pause. Again, the IT issues, as we just talked about, so. Congratulations, Councilman Brent Wheat.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you even on a closer basis in 2021, so.
I want to thank Brent for stepping up and thank Dick for two years of doing a good job.
Absolutely agree. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business coming for the council?
No, sir.
Okay, just want to take a moment, wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Okay, just want to take a moment, wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. I know it's been a challenging year for sure, but I think if you look back, you'll see we were very successful as well, and we've accomplished a lot under unique circumstances, hopefully. Hopefully it doesn't happen, happen again.
I'd like to take the time to thank the mayor and the council for their work this year and, and so forth. Even though we had such a strange year, I think we have accomplished a lot and got a lot planned in the future, and I want to thank Kevin and Ben for all the work that they do and, and have done, and, you know, I just see a lot of good things happening in Lebanon, and I want to just appreciate everybody, what they do, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, with that, would entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Aye.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Disposed? All right, claims are approved, and.
Are they adjourned?
Give me one second. The, so our next city council meeting will be Monday, January 11th, 2021, at 7:15 PM. So with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Merry Christmas.
We are adjourned, thanks for watching, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everybody at home.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.